Good evening and welcome to the Pima Community College Monday, November 5th, 2008 Governing Board Study Session. We're meeting at the district offices and our first item on the agenda is 1.1 Facilities Master Plan Update. And the update is going to include plans for moving the college programs' personnel, such as those at the community campus. Chancellor Lambert.
We're very pleased to be able to update you on our Facilities Master Plan and the corresponding moves that are going to happen as it relates to the community campus. So I have our Provost, Dr. Doras Doran Serta here to talk about the educational components, as well as Bill Ward, our Vice Chancellor for Facilities. So I'll turn it over to you two.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. A very exciting time to share with you everything that we have accomplished thus far for the Educational and Facilities Master Plan. We've come a very long way, as you know, and all of these recommendations had come out from our consultants working with Education Facilities Master Plan. So today, we're providing you with an update on where things stand, and some things will be familiar to you because we've had other board study sessions and reports during the board meetings as well, specifically on the educational part of it. So as you can see, we'll go to the next slide here. Talking about program review, so each year, the academic deans are getting data that are very important to analyze their programs, and that's related to enrollment, retention, persistence, and completion. They also get labor statistics to see what is the market out there in the field locally as well. So all of these programs have already gone through two cycles of Program Viability Review, which was very intense and was shared with the Chancellor and me back in December. So what we've done so far is we've reviewed 17 programs this past year, and the review cycle is going to be every four years. We're currently reviewing 25 programs, and those are currently being reviewed. I have the list here. I can mention some right now, so you can take a -- so you can understand which are the 25. I won't mention all of them, but for example, Degree for Clinical Research Coordinator, Medical Laboratory Technician is a degree, Medical Assistant Certificate, Automotive Technology Degree and Certificate. So some of these have degree and certificate. Some of them are just standalone degree or standalone certificate. Another one's paralegal, degree and certificate, early childhood education degree, early childhood studies degree, et cetera, et cetera. So we have 25 that are going through this second cycle of review. Next steps, we have a Program Review Calendar schedule that is now adjusted to the college's budget and curriculum processes. Also, very good news with our new electronic Illumin platform, this will be much easier because faculty will be able to input data, but it's just a one-time thing. It's easy to use, and so they can record their course-level outcomes, program-level outcomes, and JLOs, the Gen Ed program outcomes.
Oh, I saw that, and so it's not electronic. The computer doesn't review the program, right? You just -- you now can collect the data a lot easier.
Right. So before, it was all done by hand, and it was actual paperwork. So now, we have a repository that anyone can access at any time, and it makes life so much easier. So we're very excited about that. Okay, moving along. Guided Pathways. We have implemented our default pathways, proactive advising, 15 to finish, and exploratory majors. Now, the meta-majors, but we're calling them areas of interest. We haven't decided on the terminology yet. But we've come a long ways with that. As you know, the faculty did the course and program audit last year, and so now, we're almost 100% at implementing guided pathways. We're tweaking things. This is part of the continuous improvement that we always do, of course. And advisors, for example, proactive advising and 15 to finish have received training. Again, 15 to finish is to help our students understand, you know, they can just take one more class, because really, the 12 credits is full-time student, but if they're going to finish on time, so they can either go on to a four-year institution or to the job force, they need to be taking 15 credits. So they're being informed, so they make an informed choice about what they want to do. Some other good news is that after submitting all of these changes, the U.S. Department of Education and Title IV Financial Aid Eligibility has been approved, so we're very happy about that. That's pretty huge. Yes. And, okay, and so let's go on, because I know we're running out of time. Block scheduling. So what we have right now is not block scheduling. That's our ultimate goal, but what we have is common end and start times that will lead us to block scheduling. And this is to make it much easier for students to take the 15 credits. Lamotta Mitchell has -- Dr. Lamotta Mitchell has been working very hard on this, and Lisa Nutt, when she was with the college also, and working with the master schedulers. So we hope to fully implement this in the, I think it's in the spring. Another scheduling software that we have is AdAstra, and that is using analytics that helps us to take a more proactive approach towards scheduling, instead of being reactive, as we have been for all the -- for many, many years. And it's been, it's kind of been tough letting people understand the importance of using this, the scheduling, because I think people didn't realize, for example, there were 69 start times in one campus. So this really streamlines things, and it's looking more at being student-centric and looking at their schedule and their needs. I know they've done a student survey, and the survey indicated no problems with the start and comment, the common start and end times. They just, the students requested perhaps more evening and weekend classes. Yes.
Just very quickly, so you said in the spring, you think it will be finished?
Yes.
But on the slide, it says the fall. Do you know, just for clarity's sake, what we can anticipate?
Whenever we have the, yeah, so it should be fall. I'm sorry.
It should be fall, okay.
Yeah, it should be fall.
And then, and then also, in the guided pathways, you said we were close to 100%?
Yes.
When do you think we'll be at 100%?
That'll be by, what are we now? We're in fall for the spring.
So that'll be the spring of 2019, followed by the, followed by the block scheduling, or the moving towards the common start times?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, of course. Delores. I thought we were going to do like a pilot for block, no?
We did with, basically with the summer, but it was, it wasn't block scheduling. It was, again, common start and end times, because we can't fully implement block scheduling until we have fully implemented pathways. They're connected. Yeah. But it's coming soon.
Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, can I just say, this is amazing, because I think we first talked about guided pathways less than two years ago.
Right.
So this is really amazing.
Yeah. We're very proud of where we are, and it's, it's taken the whole college to really understand and take this, so we're very grateful.
I just want to underscore what you just said, Mark, because a lot of places, you're talking minimum three years, some places talking five years to do what we just did. And so that really speaks highly of the work of our faculty, our staff, and administrators to do this on behalf of our students. So we should be all very, very pleased, and thank you, Delores, for your leadership in making this happen for the college.
It's all teamwork. Okay. And then, lastly, regarding the Education Facilities Master Plan is on, for my part of it, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so we have listed here the six strategic goals, and I'd like to give you a brief update on each one. So the first one, establishing sustainable diversity, equity, inclusion, infrastructure, including higher hiring an officer, which we have, which is, who is Hilda Ladner, who started in January. We've also got approval for having a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator, who was hired and started in September, and that's Yolanda Gonzalez. And so she's helping with the research and getting, helping Hilda with all the different components of the strategic plan. We've established a budget as well. So the second one is improve recruitment and retention of employees from underrepresented populations. So Hilda has met with HR, OED, Faculty Affairs, and Development about hiring processes and employee retention. So those conversations continue and what we can do to, to help with that. The next one, building diversity and inclusion competencies for employees. As you know, all employees that serve on a search committee, they must complete an online workshop on implicit bias. That's one component. Yes. Also, Hilda has developed and offered workshops for faculty and staff related to building intercultural competencies, including at All College Day and the Faculty Learning Academy, where we're onboarding our new faculty. So she's been very much involved in creating and providing those workshops. As you know, in All College Day, we had an HSI expert, Dr. Melissa Salazar, and that was thanks to Hilda Ladner, who brought her. Next, establish and/or strengthen partnerships with organizations that provide services to underrepresented populations in Pima County. So our officer has initiated with conversation and discussions with about 25 community organizations so far. And another important aspect of this is that we have approved space and funding for the Immigrant and Refugee Student Resource Center. We're very excited about that. And student-employee positions are posted right now, so they can possibly, so they can work at this Student Resource Center. The next one is enhance and increase students' diversity and inclusion. So Hilda is very connected to the student leadership organizations. She's visited them, she's talked to them, she's provided workshops for them, including, I believe, the Student Senate. And all of it is presenting on equity-minded leadership. And then the last bullet, prepare students, faculty, and staff to adapt and succeed in a diverse, global, multicultural, multi-ethnic society. This includes courses, academic activities, student leadership activities, entertainment, community service. All of these focus on developing intercultural competence that she's very much involved in. So that's kind of a brief overview of what's been accomplished so far, which I think is pretty much since January.
Any questions? Dr. Lee?
I do have a question, Delores, regarding, I think it's the second bullet, improve recruitment and retention of employees from underrepresented populations. Is it possible for us to get a report on what has been done? Because I know that there are different strategies, and I don't know if anything's been done to this, at this point.
Hilda, you here? Do you want to address it? Yes, could you please? Yeah.
Sure. You can invite Jeffrey.
Well, do we want to set this as a separate?
Just a quick update. Come on over. Hi. Okay. So I have met with Jeffrey a couple of different times. Is there another?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for that question.
We have met a couple of different times with Human Resources and Office of Employee Development, as well as with Kate Schmidt, that really works on the faculty hiring processes, looking at the way that we write job descriptions, where we're advertising, and what opportunities there are to enhance our ability to recruit more diverse pools. Right now, because of where we are with our hiring and not hiring at the college, we aren't really making any progress on this. Most of our positions are posted internally. So right now, my work is focused on how do we set up a process for when we are posting positions externally, and we will probably have some positions to post soon, and we'll have a better process for doing that. We can produce a report on where we are as far as our different employee pools and how diverse they look, or employee classes. All of the changes in personnel, as well as changes in our systems for tracking this information, have made it a little bit challenging to do this work, to be honest.
Thank you. I'll add to that, we're also going to-
Could you just introduce yourself?
Jeffrey Loney, we're acting Executive Director of Human Resources and Director of Talent Acquisition. We're also going through a revamp of our recruiting process that's been here at the college for 15 years. We're changing that right now into a much more robust customer service-enhanced process, including installing it in this new tool, Cornerstone On Demand, that the college owns. So it's not only a process, but it's installing the new tool. Along with that are a lot of diverse websites and partners that integrate into the tool to let us reach specific audiences and also can define them per recruitment. So we're working together on that as well.
Can I, can I add something? I think it's, I want to underscore this, because I know Damian and Mark were able to see the presentation in New York at ACCT. And where the future of recruitment is going is not based on the model that we're currently using. It has to move to a more proactive, to be able to anticipate and find your candidates long before they become candidates. So we're going to have to be able to leverage the technology tools better. We're going to have to be able to leverage some of the partnerships that are outside of the college, like LinkedIn, because that's where things are moving. Because if we're not reaching them, if we're waiting for them to send us their resume, we've lost already. So we've got to get to a better place, and that's going to be more challenging on the organization as we go forward. Bill was also there for that presentation.
Okay. Dr. Lee?
I would also like to add that I know we have a partnership, at least, I'm not sure how formal it is, but we used to, in the Sciences with the University of Arizona, by which they would teach for us as adjuncts. And I do know that there have been, in the past, minority talent in that pool that ended up getting their doctorate in the Sciences and moved on, but I remember one of them in particular said how much he was surprised, how much he enjoyed teaching the community college population. So I would say, you know, what are some of those best practices out there, so that we can partner with the University of Arizona and get some of that talent?
I'll just say that that's absolutely right. We do have some great talent right here in our own backyard. A great place that is already exemplifying some of that is our Mexican-American Studies Program. They have a lot of adjunct faculty that are in the doctoral programs that teach for us in that program.
And maybe each, every six months, we could just get a little small, short update on this topic, so that we can sort of stay informed. Okay. Okay, thank you guys very much. We really appreciate it. It looks like there's one more.
Delores has asked me to just tell you a little bit about our involvement with the HSI work that's happening at the University of Arizona, and that I've been engaged with Marla Franco, who is their person leading that effort at the University of Arizona, and making sure that as they look at grant opportunities and pathways for students, that we're involved with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, let's move on to Bill, who's going to talk to us about the Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you.
And I'll go, we'll go through this quick. So wanted to start out, give you kind of an idea of where we are today, as of, as of related to the ed and the Facilities Master Plan, just to let the board know, and the Chancellor, that we, Delores and I are working together, and we're tracking the whole plan together, so we're not just looking at what we're doing related to developing. We're also looking at like pathways and things like that, so that we know that we're moving everything at the same time. So I just want to let you guys know that. Plus, we've also developed a cash flow chart that was utilized as part of when we went out for the revenue bond, and that's something that we're continuously looking at and monitoring, and will continue, will continue to do so throughout the process. So what we've done so far at the downtown campus, as you can see, I won't read everything, but I'll go through it, that we've completed a programming document that mainly looked at the Centers of Excellence for the downtown campus facility. And so we completed that document, and we took all that input and have developed a proposal, and have worked with Dave Dory and his team. And so we will be meeting with a bunch of architects and engineers on the 7th of this month to discuss the development of our new facilities downtown, and hopefully get, from that, we'll get some good candidates for architect selection. And as you know, that we're looking at leased spending related to that, those Centers of Excellence, about $43 million worth of work that we're going to do down there, which is going to relate to the new buildings, the applied technology, the testing area, the acre space welding, and the other things that we're looking at. So I just want you to know that these were all, these will all be included as part of what we'll be looking at at the downtown campus. And then, as you know, we've purchased a number of properties. Thank you, Board, for your support for that. So we've, we purchased the Frontier Motel, the college has, and also the Tucson Inn, and then the back part of the Fortuna, which is, you guys, hopefully you've driven by there. It's no longer there anymore. It's just a dirt lot. And then, we're in the, we will be bringing forward the recommendation to purchase the Copper Cactus. And so with that said, I kind of wanted you to take a look, if you take a look over here, that's just the bigger slide that's up there. That's just kind of a conceptual idea of what the campus would look like. One of the things to let you know is everything in the top corner, the top left corner that's blue, except that corner lot, those three partials are all our historic partials. And so what we've done with that is we've brought in one of our consultants, our in-house consultants, who is going to do a full historic preservation assessment on those properties as to their historic value and everything that we can do to bring them up to standards, and also look at potential uses and the idea of maybe even a potential partnership with somebody outside. So I just want to let you guys know that we're looking at that. That's part, that will be part of a separate assessment, so I just wanted to make that clear to the Board. That's not what the, when we select a new architect for the Centers of Excellence, they're not going to be looking at the historic stuff. That's going to be separated out. And so-
Mr. Hannah?
Is it just the Tucson Inn? What's, what do you, when you say historic sites, what are you talking about?
So what we have is, is we've got the Tucson Inn. We have the Copper Cactus, which is the one in the middle. The Tucson Inn would be the first blue one, the blue right there next to that parking lot to the right. And then, in the middle, that's the one that we're going to be going for this month. That's the Copper Cactus. And then, the one right next to it, to the left, is the Frontier. Those were all part of a historic assessment that was done related to the whole, as you're coming into Miracle Mile, Mile and all of that and everything, they were part of that. And so we're going to be looking at all of those properties.
So it's all three?
It's all three. It's not the, the corner lot on the end, I'm, that, that's actually, that's part of the Frontier. That's, I mean, the Fortuna, that is not historic. And so, those are the three partials.
Dr. Lee?
So being a historic site, can you tell us a little bit about what that means?
Well, what they'll do is, is they're going to, we're going to go in, and we want to look first, do all the research we can, which there is a lot of information out there already on, there's a lot of information on these partials that's in, that's in the system now, when it relates to historic preservation. And so what we would do is, is go out, do an assessment, show their historical value, what they were, you know, and I mean, Damian knows all about how these types of things are done. And then, what we would do is then turn around and look at what we could, you know, what is going to cost us to restore the facilities, and what level of restoration we would do. So I mean, it's like, we may, and I mean, we may not say we can't save the windows or something like that, or we go with something that's a little more modern or something. So we would want to look at actually what we could do with the facilities related to their historic value, and if we could totally restore them, then what would their uses be? And so that's kind of the assessment that we've asked our architectural engineering firms to do for us, is to look at pretty much everything that's out there, and then to come back with suggestions as to, as to how this could be done and other uses or potential partnerships.
Yeah. Might, might it be so restrictive that it would not make sense for us to purchase these other properties?
Restrict, and-
Well, might the historic, whatever is required to maintain the historic nature of these buildings, might we say, that doesn't make sense for us to-
I would think that, I would think the issue would be the use, is if we were able to restore them, because they are a pretty good size. If it's, the Frontier and the Copper Cactus are, they're pretty good-sized little facilities. And so I think the issue would be more so the money for the use, in a sense.
Yeah, and I would-
But, but I wouldn't think that we, you know, I mean, I'm, in my opinion, I think this would be a good investment for the, to the college, because at the end of the day, they, they do add historic value. The college, it does already have two historic facilities on the downtown campus, and so, and also, we do have our neon signage, which is considered historic. And then, and then on the other side of that, one could say that if you tore them down, that that dirt would be worth, you know, I'm just, I mean, I'm just saying that as we, as we talk about this now, literally, people are looking at this area, because they know Pima College is developing now. And so every piece of property now, even historic properties, are becoming sought after by other entities.
So what I'm asking is, is the practicality. So if it comes back that the historic restrictions are so tough on these buildings, which I don't think they, I have no-
They're already being utilized now. They're, they're already being utilized as hotels now.
Yeah. Well, do, but, so the practicality is, do we need, and we don't need to discuss this here, but I just make sure we're thinking about this. Do we need three hotels, or do we need one hotel that we can use for whatever program we decide to use? Are those other two buildings, if they're so burdened by requirements, does it make a sense for us to move forward on them?
Well, we've already got, we've already purchased two of them, and the one in the middle, the one in the middle, the parking lot that, that isn't behind it, already belongs to the college as is now. And so it's not like we're, you know, I can see what you're saying, Mark. My, my opinion is, is I feel that the, the facilities do have value to them and could be definitely utilized by the college. If we had to go in and restore them, it's just you would have to make them accessible and, and all of the things that relate to that. But there is some pretty good square footage there.
So one of the things I would recommend is, I think there is this issue of how we're going to programmatically use these resources, and maybe we could reach out to the Arizona, Southern Arizona Chapter of the AIA.
Yeah.
They've held design charrettes for other similar properties for the county. I can think of like the Willmont Library as an example, that then resulted in sort of a very clear strategic plan on how to adaptively reuse that property for a library. So maybe we could reach out to them as sort of a way of creating a partnership.
Well, it's, in that way, you get a bunch of minds at the table, and they help, help revitalize this area. And actually, that's part of what, that whole, that whole, what is it, Route 77 or 78, whatever it is, that was the whole idea, was to, to do as much of that as you could. So that's what we've got planned.
One more question from Dr. Lee. And then, we do need to move on, because we have a lot to get through.
I haven't seen you guys in a while.
We missed you.
Okay. And I, hey, bear with me, I only have another month.
Ah! Get all of them out.
Okay. Isn't it, it looks like here, just by looking, the blue, we've got culinary, hospitality, tourism in separate buildings, but aren't they all related?
They are, and this is, we were just, we were just labeling buildings, in a sense, but, but we wanted to show what we could actually, what type of footprint could look. This is just more of just kind of an idea. One of the things that will happen is when, when Dave Dory and his teams recommends an architect, you know, for me, for, to recommend to you guys, that'll be part of their job, will be to come back and actually do, do this, but do it in a final format, as to exactly what the campus is going to look like. We just did this so we could, we just wanted you to see what it could look like, or what, how we could move things around, or how we could, we've got some other drawings, I just couldn't bring them all, because we have to show green, green and we agree in everything all over the place.
Okay.
It was just, you know, just for looks, mainly.
One more thing.
Yes, Dr. Lee?
It seems to me, because I know Grand Canyon does operate their own hotel in NAU, used to, I don't know if they still do, that it would be an ideal partnership to potentially look at a boutique hotel-
Yeah, we're, we're-
Where you do all of those things together, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we're, we're already, in a sense, talking with someone who, who actually takes all the overflow right now of Grand Canyon and Phoenix.
But I was talking also about that partnership.
Yeah.
Which would be awesome.
Okay.
And so then, as you know, we've done some work with the aviation. I know that's not so much listed in the Educational Facilities Master Plan. I think we did put it-
You'd have to hold the button.
We did.
You'd have to hold the button.
I don't think this one has a button.
Okay.
Yeah. Is, and so we just want to let you know that we did work with our aviation team, Dave Dory and his team, Ian Rourke and others, and had developed a proposal that's gone, that it, that should be eventually, hopefully, maybe receiving approval by our governor's office. And so the total estimate of this facility would be, if the college could get everything that it needed, would be close to $20 million, and that would include, I'm assuming that would include staffing. I know we have a list of 16 million, but we also, you know, that's, that's what it's going to cost to run it. And then, maybe somebody could turn that, I can show you what the back of that thing looks like, because what we did was, we did a full assessment to, to show you what this ask would be for, so. So the idea would be to totally span, expand the footprint of the aviation facility and be able to put a whole- be able to put a whole other large plane in there.
Mr. Hannah?
And that's not included in the revenue, that's not, there's no funds for that?
That's not part of the revenue. That's part of an ask. And then, and then we've also had all, the county has approached us and, and there may be some interest there, so you never know where this go, will go, but I think it's worth mentioning, noticing about the fact that, you know, we do have it potentially broken down into smaller ask, but the main, I just wanted you to know the gist of it.
And this expansion would allow us to double the current enrollment in the program?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would require FAA approval and all that stuff too, right?
Okay.
And then, as you guys know, we've been doing some work at our east campus, which has already started. We've started the cyber warfare range, so really excited about getting that thing finalized. There were a few heat cups to get the project moving, but once we worked out the details, I think we're, our goal is to have this thing done before the ending of this calendar year. So I just want to let you guys know that and that, that we're working with also our architectural and engineering firm who's, who actually did the assessment at the downtown campus. They're going to be helping us with the science labs and ILOAD health work that's going to be done at West. And basically what we're going to do is kind of follow the same, well, we're going to follow the exact same model we did at downtown. They'll come in, they'll meet with everybody, we'll get everything on the table, and then from that information, we'll develop a proposal to hire an architect. So, and then we're also working with Dolores and her team to develop our temporary enrollment center, which will be located at the West Campus. And, and so we're working directly with Dolores and her team and Morgan and others to, to decide how that all is going to work out and flow. And then the last thing for me to update you on here is the, and so as, as you're aware, we'll be bringing forward the purchase of the community camp, or the sale of the community campus building at this, at this month's board meeting. With that said, to let you know, the, we have, as you, as, I mean, as the board is aware, we have a buyer who's offered to purchase the facility at 6 million and then the land under the, under the building is worth about 1.5 million, which is owned by the city of Tucson. And so the way it stands now is we would bring this forward to you, and if you approve it, then what would end out happening is, is then it would have to go forward to mayor and council for approval, because the, we are, the college does have the right to do what we're doing, but at the end of the day, the city owns the land. And so we, they, we do have the right because we have a 50-year ground lease, but I just want you to know that might create some heartburn, because we do have a 50-year ground lease. But they, and so there's no guarantee that, that this will be approved by the city, but we, I just want to make you aware of that. With that said, my team has been working directly with the campus and the leadership of that campus to determine the needs. We sent out notifications, as you guys are aware, throughout the whole district, receiving information on, not just related to sale of the community campus, but also all the different areas that we were looking at moving throughout the college district. And so what we have done is we have, with my team, working with the campuses, we've made some decisions on three main areas, and then the other areas, we have designated space for that. And if the board approves this, then we will start working to make some of the moves. Some of the moves will be permanent and some of them will be temporary. On the way that it works with, with the purchase, if we, I think it's going forward, is that we would sell it and close the beginning of the year. And then we would, in turn, we would have the option to lease the space, the whole space until May. And then from that time, the potential buyers, if this was to go through, then we could potentially lease part of the space till September. And the cost, to let you guys know about that, we've done an assessment and we're looking at a total cost of, if we look at our rent and if, if it was the, we were going to pay full rent all the way till June or July, the total cost for us would be about $190,000. And then all the moves that we would be making, I think the total community, the total cost of the moves would be around $440,000. And just to let the board know is, is that enough, even though I know that there are things, costs that are going to be associated with moving people, if this goes through out of community campus, is that we had always included cost in all of our moves related to what we developed in the bond, you know, so the costs were, in other words, as part of the ed and facilities master plan, we were moving a bunch of people around. So we included those costs, so we should be okay.
Thank you very much, Bill. Mr. Hannah?
So just back to the east campus things and the west campus, the, the enrollment center.
Yeah.
Those are all included in the revenue bond?
Yes.
Those were planned for in the revenue bond, right?
Yes, we're good. And I, and I'm pretty sure, I know we've got dollars, if with, we already have monies for the east, east campus, and I'm not, and I'm not so concerned about the, the cost. In other words, the cost at West shouldn't be too bad.
Doctor?
And at West, we're taking care of those labs that we've been talking about.
Yes, that's part of, that's part of that whole assessment.
And Dr. Lee?
Where is Adult Ed going?
Adult Ed will be going to the downtown campus.
Okay. Well, oh, sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, because I saw it. It says adult, I was looking at that slide, it says Adult Ed expansion in, at 29th Street.
Well, I think there are, I think that there were, there, that was in the plan originally as part of what the designers had done, but when we made the decision to, to move PSCSI, and then I think the idea is something else is, we're thinking about something else going there.
Okay, so Adult Ed is, is the headquarters is going to downtown?
Yes.
Which is terrific. Okay.
But we're going to have to, we're going to bring them there, but then the idea would be to build that new facility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is a great plan. I thank you both very much for all of your diligent and hard work. You know, as we move through all of these things, I, whether it's the historic assets or these new facilities, I would really encourage us to think about how we can leverage public partnerships and private partnerships to really enhance and even thinking about as much as like going, being hyper proactive and actually going out with, with RFPs to really solicit support and interest from different partners, whether it's a hotel management program or it's the redevelopment of some of these other resources.
You know, the cool thing is, is there's actually a major association that's out there that deal, that that's what it is, it's public-private partnerships.
Okay. Mr. Hannah, you look like you have one last question?
Yeah, I just want to cap this off by saying that to our critics who say that why are you spending money, your enrollment's down, this is exactly, that's exactly why we're spending this money, is that this is all about students. How can we serve students better and enhance our enrollment by having the right facilities? So thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you both.
The team effort.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. Any, okay, okay. Next item on our agenda is 1.2 Business and Industry Perspectives. Discussion will focus on scalability, growth, technology and major industry sectors, and we have a number of guests, which I'm very excited about.
Yes, yes. So we're very excited to invite our partners from Caterpillar, Freeport-Mack Moran, Raytheon and Too Simple, if you're all here, if you wouldn't mind joining us at the, the table. And I'm going to have Ian introduce the group and he'll help facilitate the conversations. But before we do that, I want to just remind everyone, especially in the audience, this came out of the work of the board during the retreat to hold two sessions this academic year, one in the fall and one in the spring, really reaching out to our industry partners and different sectors, especially aligned to our Centers of Excellence. So it was based on that, that this opportunity was created and set up to be facilitated. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ian Rourke. Ian, why don't you just use this?
Okay. Good afternoon. Do I have to push the button?
That's on.
It's on already. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. First and foremost, I would like to, before formally introducing all of our guests, just thank each and every single one of them for taking times away from their place of business to come share with our college community, your perspective on where we are going in Tucson with respect to your expansions, your upcoming projects and the challenges that this labor market and technology are bringing to your workforce development and talent procurement scenarios. So with that, we have Robert Brown with Too Simple, who is the Director of Public Affairs. For those that are not aware, Too Simple is an autonomous vehicle technology company that has located their research, design and integration activities here in Tucson. We also have Carl Mitchell from Freeport-Mack Moran, who is the Training Manager for the company. Carl? And then we have, we have Gene Savage, who is the Vice President of Surface Mining and Technology for Caterpillar. Gene? And we, finally there at the end, we have Alan Couture, who serves as the Vice President of Operations for Raytheon Missile Systems. So board, chancellor and guests, we have a series of questions that we will start through, as I indicated in prior communication. Anytime, the conversation may go into some follow-up from where our board may want to take us, and we may go into a different direction. But with that, and we'll go ahead and go clockwise. So Carl, we'll start with you in Freeport. If each of you could give us a brief update on your company's location and expansion plans in Tucson and the impact on the community. And starting with Freeport, with mining being cyclical, we're really interested to hear what, what are the upcoming needs with respect to mining?
Okay, our, we have nine mines throughout the, the desert southwest, plus overseas operations as well. But one of our mines is the Sierra Rida property, which is about 20 miles south of Tucson, near the Green Valley, Sahara Rida area. The good news is, is we recently went to 100%. We had reduced production for that site four years ago. We're back up to 100% and roughly about 1,000 people there. And then one unique thing that we've recently started though is also a very collaborative and collective view of our workforce needs, especially when it comes to skilled trades. That's where we're, we're, we're really hurting.
Specifically which areas of skilled trades?
Fixed plant maintenance, heavy equipment maintenance, especially with our equipment, and then electrical and instrumentation.
Alan?
As you know, we're Arizona, Southern Arizona's largest employer with over 14,000 employees here in Tucson area alone. From an investment point of view, we have an economic impact of over $2.1 billion annually. And our growth projections are over 2,000 employees in the next five years, of which we're in the third year of that growth strategy and we're on plan. And from expanding our footprint, if anyone's landed in the airport lately or looked around the airport, Missile Systems is definitely growing with over 700,000 square feet of facilities growth to harness our new multi-purpose buildings and to support all our new contracts. So we're definitely growing in the Tucson area.
And Gene for Caterpillar?
Sure. So we're excited. We've got the building going up below the A on the mountain there, getting close. We're ahead of our projections on moving people into the area. So if you look at the downtown offices, our proving ground in Green Valley and our demonstration center out there, we have well over 500 people already and expect that after the first of the year to continue to grow.
And finally, Robert with Too Simple?
First off, thanks for having me. So we got the Tucson a little over a year ago with a handful of folks from San Diego. We're up to 70 employees now and we made a big announcement a few weeks ago, almost a little over a month ago, about our, kind of the scalability of what we're doing here in Tucson, from six trucks, the 200 next year. And with those 200 trucks, we're bringing probably a little over 500 jobs, hopefully, if we can get the trucks ordered as quickly as possible.
And I was at that announcement, as many of the team were, and it was very exciting. So with that, the term that you, you said that I want to hone in on for the next question is the premise is scalability. So for this first industry perspectives session, we, we've been thinking about scalability. So each and every single one of your companies here, three of you are already large, very large companies, and Too Simple is going to be large with, with 500. And, and so with that, you do not represent the entire value chain or supply chain of your industries, but as the lead companies, including for an emerging industry with autonomous vehicle technology, you sort of set the stage for the rest of the reason with respect to scalability. So with that, what are your plans moving forward for expansions? Why did you select Tucson? Why did you choose to expand in Tucson? With Raytheon, for instance, what were some of the things that led to the decision to expand? And so since I've called Raytheon, Alan, we'll start with you and then work around this way. So with respect to that next question and scalability, what are your company's plans moving forward and what as your community college, may we anticipate with respect to the impact for the workforce?
Now, as I said earlier, our plans for expansion currently are over 2,000 employees, 700-plus thousand square feet of facilities, primarily based on Tucson being our center of excellence for our technology and the products that we're producing. And in the nature of our business, we have a partner with Arizona, we have a partner with the city of Tucson and PCC. We want to continue to grow here. It's part of our commitment and we're quite frankly, living up to our commitments of what we promised in the past. Also, within our business for growing, we're a technology company, and so we're constantly working with the University of Arizona and working with the local economy, the local community on growing our technology, learning through our technology, our engineering schools, and also delivering on our promise. At the end of the day, Raytheon delivers a quality product on time, at or below cost and in a safe environment. And that's something we're continuing to grow on and continuing to commit to as we move forward.
Skip around a little bit. Robert?
So I was, someone asked me this question, you know, why did we pick Tucson? And, and because most of the companies that do it, we did move to, you know, the Phoenix area. And it really is a testament to this community. Shoudi and us, we're, we really were accepted with open arms between, from Yale to University of Arizona, the city, the county, law enforcement. We have yet to run into like a face that wasn't smiling and welcoming us here. And so we want to be a good partner here as well. And for us to scale, eventually, we just want to be a software company, but we need to be a fleet to prove out the technology to the regulators, to my parents, who are very skeptical, you know, lots of different folks out there. And so we'll have the Too Simple fleet and it will be hauling goods for, for folks that you know. And then, you know, we're working with the OEMs and working with the tier ones, so eventually, you know, down the road that a big company, a big fleet could order, say, a brand new Peterbilt with our technology. But, you know, the workforce that we are looking for in the immediate future, and we work with Ian and his team, is obviously truck drivers, because, you know, we are a strong belief in that, you know, a trucker going into, he's 25, going to be a trucker today, will retire a truck driver. His role or her role might be changed, might be different. Hopefully their lifestyle would be a lot better and improved by our technology, but that's one profession that we're interested in. Also, you know, we deal with diesel drive train, all that kind of stuff, and, you know, from logistics, we're hoping to be a positive disruption, not a negative disruption in the logistics industry.
Gene?
Well, Tucson is our mining hub and it's definitely the future of technology within mining for us. So we're close to customers. We can see how our technology impacts them, what changes we need to make. And we're definitely looking for some talent. So as we look at the mechatronics, I was happy to see that up there, that you're growing there. Instrumentation, some of the technology and software with the autonomy that we have going in mine sites, it, it's changing. Our customers are depending on those to make more productive, safer equipment and then easier to maintain for them and their employees.
Just for moving forward, we're highly dependent on economics being in mining. We're, we're mainly for the southwest, we're copper and molybdenum. We've got some of the lowest grades in the world, but we're the best low-grade miners out there. We're highly dependent though on technology and highly skilled people. So we've got a research center in town, we're constantly looking at the latest and greatest technologies, even including big data. So the artificial intelligence, all of those things, we're trying to incorporate to keep us productive and efficient.
Any questions from our board?
Yes, if, if we, if you could be a little bit more specific, if you're able to, on what Pima could do today to train the workforce needed for you. You said Raytheon's in a two-year out of five-year growth span. So for example, I'm sure you're, obviously you need engineers. Well, we produce individuals that transfer into that field, but do you need technicians that we could train, specialized technicians per se? You know, those are the kinds of things that the board wants to do to be reactive to your needs.
Yeah, that's a great question. And the nature of our work, one of the fundamental things that employees need to have is a clearance, a secret clearance at a minimum. If you can figure out that, I would, I would love, I would love you to tell me the recipe for getting a clearance inside a year. But on a serious note, the technologies that we're working with, we still need machinists, right? We still need the technology of having all the various machining tech abilities, as well as our, our people would like more online training. our people would like more online training, because it's the nature of what they're doing. If you could provide more online training, that would be great. And the commitments that we saw today earlier about the growth and expansion with the Centers of Excellence, absolutely, that will help us going forward. So to stay committed to the plans that we saw earlier today would be great.
I'm going to add, you've already started helping us. So you put a program together very quickly where we're bringing engineers over, we're training them on how to be machinists and how to do the welding, so that helps them design better. We're looking at something for instrumentation, and as we go forward, you're going to need continuing learning. So someone entering the workforce today will be retrained a minimum of two times before they're able to reach retirement. So being able to set up for ongoing life training for those individuals, making sure that your programs are conducive in the timing, and then to teach more mature students sometimes.
Again, I would just like to echo what you are doing. I mean, Missy and her team has already started working with our AV test drivers on any upskills if needed, that we needed. We hosted a logistics class over at our facility and walked them through what, you know, what we predict the future might be and how it could impact the way distribution centers are set up with automation. And, you know, when you remove hours of service from the idea of trucking, you know, a truck could theoretically get across the country rather in five days than two days. And so how major companies set up their distribution centers will change too. So, and then, so again, you know, like I said, those are our two kind of first, first off things that we've worked with Ian and his team. But we've also talked about, you know, the diesel mechanics and that kind of stuff as well.
I think the only thing that I could add is life skills type training is sometimes we get a very good, you know, technically competent person, maybe lacking though, in basic life skills, so.
Yes, let's try that out.
So, I wanted to go back to your comment about security clearance, because, you know, it was kind of a saying in a joking way, but is there, our enrollment people are in high schools all the time. So are there things our enrollment people should be telling high school students, if you want to work for Raytheon, don't get into trouble?
Yes, yes. Stay in school, be clean, yes, absolutely.
I mean, I was sort of thinking along the same lines. I mean, is there something that we can do to help accelerate that type of process when people are enrolling in our program, knowing that these are the sort of industries that they're going to be going to, or this is the sort of track that we could help accelerate, where there would be an application process even earlier on? But I think, to your other point, you know, I, this Board, I can affirm our commitment to the completion of those Centers of Excellence. We are going to deliver on those, and we're very excited to be able to really continue our partnerships with you and with other industries and this, companies in this community, to ensure that our students have jobs at the end of their pathway of education. So we really are committed to the completion and the delivery on that.
I will make one comment on high school when you're in there. So getting people to realize the trades can be very good, profitable careers for them long-term, is something we keep talking about. So you're talking about welders and machinists, lots of work, hard time filling those positions, and it's not just us, it's our partners and customers. So, a lot of opportunity there if we can find people who are willing to learn those skills and then apply them.
So Ian, can I ask you? So, how can we have our enrollment people work with you? I'm sure you do this, but to kind of get that message across. So it continues to be a problem in high schools. As a former high school counselor, I know that everybody wants to be doctors and engineers, and they don't think about these kinds of jobs. So these folks are telling us, here's what we really need. So does that get filtered through you to our enrollment people? How's that work?
Some initial thoughts. We do it, but not at the scale that is required. So there's greater connectivity through employer engagement and career services with student services and our colleagues. So I think Irene's in here, and Amanda's in here, or there were. So now, there are already greater connections between what is workforce development now, presently located in that community, and student services, I think to a higher degree than has been in the past with respect to that. But now that we have our guided pathways laid out, and we know internally what the sequence is, it's a matter of making sure that not just our paraphernalia, but our messaging with respect to every single one of these programs and study is consistent. And that's where the Advisory Committee Reform piece comes in. So if we go back to the Advisory Committee Regiment, and these folks' teams serve on advisory committees, that information is supposed to filter up through program review, and we're supposed to be able to document changes as a part of onboarding. That's one of the elements that's talked about in those four domains of the Advisory Committee Review Process. So we are laying, we're putting in place a lot of the processes and foundations that will allow that to no longer just be a one-off or a random act of excellence, but a more systemic approach to making sure that as people are coming into those guided pathways, that they know what they're getting into. Because it's really sort of malpractice if we're training people to get jobs that they're currently not eligible for. At the same time, there are also a lot of second chance efforts, and Tony's not here today, I don't think. Tony offered, there's a lot of, there are increasing numbers of employers who it may not be Raytheon, but somewhere else with respect in these industries, and there's a lot of transferable skills, there may be a second chance employer, and making sure that we give those folks those opportunities for those second chances is equally important. Those are some initial thoughts and then steps we're taking.
Dr. Lee?
Just in closing, I want to thank all of you for your time, and we are just so pleased to have you as our partners in education. I do want to close with a quick story. Previously, I was a Dean of Students at the West Campus. One of my students...
No, we have a number of questions still left to go.
Oh, oh.
We're not done.
Oh, we're not? Okay. My story, I thought we were done, I'm sorry. But my story has to do with Raytheon, because this student came from Togo, Africa, and he came to Pima because of finances. He ended up being a tutor in math, because he excelled in math and physics. He went to the University of Arizona, and right out in engineering, he ended up getting a job with a, I believe it was a mining company, a small company. But he ended up eventually becoming, he is one of your lead engineers now, and I have no idea what he does, because he says he can't tell me. But I know he's successful.
The, many of you have already hit on some of this with the technology. And what we really want to also do is be ahead of the curve, so that we're not always just responding to new technologies when they come into the market at scale, but we're sort of predicting where those are going and how that's going to affect our training and the design. So as we're making these investments, we want to make sure that we get it right. What are some of the technological aspects that we need to be aware of, and how do we incorporate those into our programs of study and the Centers of Excellence? And any who wants to respond, feel free.
From a very traditional industry, one of the challenges we have is we have high technology and data collection systems. It's over like 3,000 data points per 10 seconds for a haul truck. Don't quote me on those, that's incredible amount of data we're getting. One of the challenges we're having, though, is the interface between, say, a supervisor making decisions and that data coming out of at him. So we're using different kinds of, experimenting with different types of tools that would be, make a very complex world usable by a supervisor on the floor to make good decisions.
To his point, it's the visualization. So we're data-rich and insights-poor right now, so we have a lot of information coming at us. But then it's how you turn it into simple visualization that they can make decisions off of. So that's going to continue to be important, I think, no matter what industry you're in, because you have to convey those messages as you have people doing more and more, one person. They have to be able to make quick decisions and have data to back that up.
The only thing to add on that is to remind the students that it's, their life is a continuous learning, that once they graduate and they come to work, it's not like, oh, I'm done with math. No, you're never done with math, right? And so it's just to keep reminding them to stay curious, and that, yeah, there is an expectation that as a technology company, we are going to move with technology with Industry 4.0 or the Internet of Things, and they need to be keeping up with that.
With you sort of is in that vein of trying to predict, but what are some of the things that you may tell those that are not familiar with the autonomous vehicle movement, technology, and how this fear of the Great Displacement? Just briefly, Robert?
One thing, it is fun where we work, is that it is, we're innovating every day. And you can't, there's a few schools trying to do it now, but you can't go to school to be an autonomous vehicle engineer. And so we're taking little, folks from all sorts of walks of life and putting them together to try to create this kind of moonshot, you know, level four truck driving itself, you know, down the road. Very scary, very, you know, kind of a visceral reaction people have when you say that out loud. And then, but then you flip that, and then, you know, what we look for, and even when we go through our hiring process, we look for people that obviously have a solid skillset, you know, that they've learned and they've owned, but also being able to think creatively and critically and be flexible. I know that's kind of like, those are buzzwords, but it's amazing how many people we disqualify when we're interviewing, because we say, you know, too rigid, you know, too locked in their ways, that, you know, he or she's been a mechanical engineer, and, you know, they've only seen this, and they refuse to, you know, think elsewise. And you want me to speak a little bit on the truck driving, kind of scare around it? So I just spent the last few days in Austin at the American Trucking Association Annual Conference. And it's, you know, these are the, you know, the people who run this country. I always feel very insignificant when I go to this conference. And their number one concern is workforce and a truck driver shortage. It's 50,000 now, and they're now thinking maybe over 200,000. The average age of the American trucker is 49, and they're, and it shows you, not necessarily how bad it is, but the American Trucking Association is now advocating for federal law to allow 18-year-olds to become interstate truckers to, they've implemented a senior, so people over 65 stay in trucking. So they are doing anything and everything to get, you know, bodies into the trucking industry. So, the idea that, you know, let's hopefully we solve the problem we want, and you flip the switch, it's still going to take years and years and years for full saturation of the market, and it's going to be incremental, it's going to be regional. Obviously, the Southwest will see it first, because that's where all the companies are. You know, we're not going to go try to solve Chicago and the Northeast tomorrow, you know, it's, so it's a, it is a, I think it'll be a gradual, it won't be like a Flint, Michigan kind of thing, where someone, you know, a policy changes and, you know, the lights turn out for this industry.
Similarly, there are varying forms of automation. Do you see displacement, or do you see just a change with respect to the technical and skilled workforce?
For us, it's been a complement, because we've introduced things like virtual and augmented reality training. And so instead of having two people side by side learning from each other, we let an individual learn through augmented or virtual reality. And it, we're not reducing the workforce because of the introduction of automation, it's complementing the workforce. It's making us more efficient, and it's giving people, quite frankly, what we call more meaningful work, more value-added work.
Going to say ours is the same. So when you look at autonomy, we've taken people out of driving the truck and put them on repairing the truck. So they have to have the technical skills or doing other jobs where they're running an operations center. So those people have to be reskilled. They have to learn a new job set, they've got to learn how to do those type of functions. But it's taking them out of an environment where they may be in harm's way. It's taking them out of environments that can be hard on their bodies and putting them in a controlled office space and allowing them to do that work.
Any remarks, Carl, or we can...
Not so much with autonomous, but remote operation of equipment. It's really added a big safety factor for us, especially in our underground operations. And then we do use drone technology, which has really expanded our true eyes of what we can survey and what we can monitor. So those are technologies that are similar to autonomous.
Thank you all for the remarks about your needs, some of your pain points, some of the technological impacts. And this is the moment of truth, it's a question you received in advance, but we are on our way to becoming a premier community college. And with that, that means we're a work in progress, and we want to hear honestly what your experience has been in working with Pima Community College. Everybody here, we've worked at various phases, some are newer, revived, because of industry coming back online, some we've been working for quite a while. So what has been your experience and what may we do better?
Well, to start us off, I just did an interview for y'all, and they probably think you guys paid me off, because I was a grad student, I was in academics, I thought I was going to be a history professor one day in my life. And so I loved academics, and some of the things that frustrated me with academics is this, whatever, you know, big bureaucracy is the speed and whatnot, and you guys are the exact opposite. I mean, Ian and I, I think at our first conversation, I want to say like six months ago, and we were already starting to develop curriculum. It's just the speed that you guys move is just incredible. And the idea that not only do you want to meet, but you actually want to do something about it. And so that's what, you know, I told the reporter, so, you know, it's a, I can't, I honestly can't say enough of what you guys and your team have created here, as the new guy on the block.
I said some of it already, you were very quick to respond to our needs, you had programs up and going. We're graduating the first two cohorts next week, so great job there. You were cost-effective and value-add, so terrific.
The word we would use has been an incredible relationship. When we think of what we've done with Irap or even with the NIMS program, you've definitely stepped up. PCC has definitely stepped up in supporting Raytheon. And like I said earlier, the things that we would like support on is that online training, because we have employees across multiple shifts, they can't come to conventional class times, so giving people that flexibility would be great. And to continue the commitment on the COE proposal, what we saw this morning, to us, that's a great direction, and just keep it going.
And I haven't had the same deeper level of interaction, but we've had very great interactions with the applied technology people, and probably one of the most significant things is the openness to discuss ideas, share ideas, see the facilities, that openness is unique.
And do you have any follow-up questions, Board members?
Dr. Lee?
Regarding the drone technology, we should add that to our aviation center. I mean, you know, I'm being facetious, but not really, because you've got these very expensive drones, and they're going to need work on, you know, so.
Mr. Hannah, anything?
None of this subject.
Okay. I mean, I think I would just say, you know, really, we really see ourselves as partners. I, you know, we have an incredible team that really, we laud all the time. It's great to hear that our community partners and industry feel the same way that we do about the direction that we're moving. But we really are here and open to any type of partnership that you sort of think that would be a good fit. And I think this Board has made a commitment to continue to try to develop programs and make key investments, not only into the Centers of Excellence, but into new curriculum or redeveloping the way that we think to better suit the changing needs of the workforce. And I want you to know that this Board really is committed to that and committed to being partners with all of you, as well as our other industry partners.
All right. With that, do you have any questions for us, guests? I want to thank you very much for your time. We know that we have some team members. Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
We're at the end now. I can tell my story. So, first of all, let me tell you that, first of all, I'm a little disappointed, there's only three out of the five of us here, because this is so important, so, but I really appreciate you folks being here in our partnerships. I appreciate what you're doing for our community, for the community of Tucson, and, you know, we're ranked 11th out of 12 similar-sized communities in terms of poverty and average wage and those kinds of things. And I feel personally responsible as part of this Board and this college to help change that, and you folks, working together with you, will do that. Let me ask you this, though. How can you, okay, so we, I assure you, you have this Board's full support in terms of doing what we need to do and doing it in a timely manner to provide help for your workforce. What about a Caterpillar diesel building with your name on it, that, I mean, so I guess what I'm asking, I'm sure Ian's already hit you up for this, is what kind of investment, are you willing to make some investment with us? I mean, obviously, we're, you know our situation, we get no money from the state, we can't continually raise taxes, we don't want to raise tuition. continually raise taxes, we don't want to raise tuition. Is there any willingness to work both ways there? And we're recording this, so.
If you look at Raytheon historically, we have made a tremendous commitment to the Tucson community. We have a tremendous impact to the economics of over $2 billion annually and we will continue to support the community. We just have to make sure it makes sense for both the community and Raytheon as a business. And to remind people sometimes that, you know, our goal is to make the world a safer place and to support our warfighters. And so making sure that people recognize that and link that into whatever actions we do with PCC would be, would be great.
Well, we're making a little bit of money right now, but we're pretty much burning through our investing money right now. But I've told Ian this, that we have committed a $25,000 donation to y'all, hopefully early next year. So we're going to, we're going to make that commitment. I know that's not enough to buy a building, though.
I'm going to say too, we're committed to the community. We've been doing outreach and we've been supporting, so we'll look at ways, just like Raytheon, that makes sense for both of us to see how we can help.
I have to pass that one to our community affairs manager. And part of it is, is I work with so many of the different mines, I'm not, I know they've done a lot of activity and support, but I'm not that knowledgeable about it.
And I think to Mark's question, I mean, we really are open for partnership. And I think that figuring out ways to build and enhance the investments that we're making in key sectors that will directly impact your industries, I think really is an amazing opportunity. And we're looking forward to, you know, furthering and enhancing those partnerships into the future.
In closing, I do want to give kudos to you, Ian. Thank you. And especially to our chancellor, because I will tell you, being on this board, I'm terming out, not running for reelection. What it was like six years ago when I first entered, there were zero partnerships. Nobody would come to the table. Nobody was coming to the table. We've come a long way. And thank you. Thank you so much.
And on behalf of Raytheon, thank you for inviting us. Appreciate it.
Thank you all again for your time. I also want to thank the members of the workforce development team that have populated the room. They can raise their hands or not. Thank you for all of you that have helped. And also for you, board, chancellor and administration, who've been supportive of our team's efforts. We have a number of deans in the room and we're excited about the future sessions to come. And we'll be coordinating with the chancellor's office with respect to your desired focus for our industry sessions one a semester. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.